Good evening, everyone. Welcome to a special edition of the William Penn School District pre-committee meeting. I'll turn it over to Ms. Harvard to introduce our guests.
Thank you. So this evening, we've had two presentations. The first one we're going to do is our Delaware County Community College. We've asked through Mr. Wright and Mr. Cuff. We wanted to hear about the resolution. So Dr. Black has joined us this evening. I know she just got back from a conference, and we appreciate you being here. I'll let you introduce the rest of your, you know, you guys are going to be in the majority this evening as well as people who are attending.
Thank you, Ms. Harvard. With me this evening, it's a pleasure to be here, first of all. Let me tell say that. With me this evening, to my far right is John Glavine. He's our acting CFO. And then our solicitor, Jim Flick, is here with us as well. Mr. Tony DeLuca, who's head of our facilities and campus safety, and Dr. Harry Costigan, my chief of staff. So all of them are here. Any question I can't answer, I have a strong bench.
Smart lady.
So are you ready to go ahead and start? All right. I'm going to tell you, and first of all, I know that you've already gotten the presentation. And so in the essence of time, I'm going to kind of walk through it. And I think the meat of what you want to hear about is the resolution and all of that. And then at that point, I'm going to ask John Glavine to come up and talk about how we're going to make that happen. And then Tony, at the end, will be able to share with you some discussion of some designs that we have for the Pendergrass property. Next slide, please. Oh, thank you. I didn't know where it was. A little bit about the college. As you all know, we have eight locations. We serve approximately 23,000 students, both credit and non-credit, at all of our facilities. We have roughly now over 125 international students, and 61% of our students transfer. And then the other 30% or more actually go into career and technical education. We're seeing that grow. We actually are seeing growth in our part-time student attendance, and that's not a bad thing. They're just taking courses as they need them so that they can be in the workforce. And we're seeing that across the country. And we have more than 100 scholarship programs with over $300,000 to support those scholarships. Next slide. Transfer agreements with our four-year schools. We continue to increase that. This says 30, but I can tell you it continues to increase every year. So over 51 associate degrees and 35 associate certificate programs. We also have been selected, going back, I said, "It's okay." We also have been selected as a great college to work for for nine years in a row. And we're hoping to get some good news in the coming weeks to find out if we've gotten it for a 10th year in a row. If so, even at nine, no other college or university in the greater Philadelphia area has achieved that. So we're very proud of that. Now you can go to the next slide. These are some of the school business and industry partners that we work with across Chester and Delaware County. Our Workforce Development Board, both Wyandotte, Newman, Westchester University, which is our largest feeder school, and then the Economic Development Council and our Chamber of Commerce. Next slide. When I got here about, well, a little over two years ago now, one of the first things that we did is we commissioned an economic impact study. We all knew, anodally, the huge impact that the college had had on the broader community, but we'd never taken the time to do an economic impact study. So we did that. Next slide. And see, two components of the study are looking at how our institution affects the local economy and a comparison of the cost and benefits to determine the return on investment from our institution. Next slide. And so looking at our economic impact, the total impact of the college is 610 million added income or 8,619 jobs that were supported. And as for the return on investment, for every dollar invested by students, there's a return of $3.50. For taxpayers, it's a $5.20 return. And for society as a whole, a $9.00 return on investment. And this is based on 2018 data. Next slide. So when you put it in context about the large impact that we have, we talked about the NFL draft that was held in Philadelphia. And if you think about how large that was and the huge impact it had on the city of Philadelphia and the surrounding area, Delaware County Community College has a 5.6 times greater impact than that draft did. And our students annually spend, annual spending is enough to buy, enough to buy 364 families a year's worth of groceries. So that says a lot about what we're bringing to the community. This is also not a complete list, but some of the larger demand occupations that our graduates have gone into from 2013 to 2019. You can see a lot of it has to do with health sciences. Next slide. And then also, we have automotive, HDAC, electrical, and then, of course, our Municipal Police Academy. Our Police Academy trains the majority of the police officers in Delaware and Chester County. Next slide. This slide represents the total number of students attending the college from William Penn from 2013 to 2018. So as you can see, it's consistently been over 1,000 students each year. Next slide. We also have a large number of students beginning to take advantage of dual enrollment here in Delaware County. And as you can see, in 2014, we were at 175 students, and this past fall, we were at 424 students. So we're beginning to see a continued increase. Parents are recognizing the return on investment that dual enrollment provides for their students. Next slide. And this slide shows the total number of students from William Penn that are taking advantage of dual enrollment. So as you can see, it's top out at 15, 16, then 51 students. This year, there were 47 students taking advantage of it. And then the total number of students who go through dual enrollment and then ultimately attend the college immediately after they graduate from high school. We've seen an increase in that number as well. Now, this slide is a heat map that shows where our students are located. And as you can see here, this is our Marple campus. But the area to the far right, larger red area, that's the Upper Darby Southeast Center. Those are where our locations are, our lease space of, for those two locations. And that's where our students are. So our thinking is we need to make sure that we're providing services to where our students are. Next slide. We have three centers, three campuses in Delaware County. Our main campus in Marple, and then our Upper Darby and Southeast Centers. The Marple campus provides school services, programs, labs, clubs, organizations, athletics, all of the above. Our Upper Darby and Southeast Centers are in lease space. So consequently, we have limited programs and services that we're able to provide to our students in those locations. And those students then not able to get their coursework at the Southeast Center or at our Upper Darby Center have to get on a bus normally because most of them don't have the transportation to get to our Marple campus. And it can take over an hour and a half for them to get to our Marple campus, taking public transportation. So now I'll talk about the opportunity for expansion with the Pendergrass building and how this came to be. In October 2018, just last fall, seems a long time ago, we learned about an RFP that the Archdiocese had released. And we, the deadline at that time was November 16th. We reached out to the Archdiocese to see if we could get an extension just to do an in-depth study. And they were not meanable to that, but they did give us until the 19th of December to get it turned in. And so our board, in December of 18, approved submission of a proposal, just a proposal for the property. In January of this year, we shared submission of that proposal with the college community when everyone came back from the holidays. We also shared that information with our school district liaisons when we met with them in January. And in February, we were notified that our proposal was accepted, but the Archdiocese did restrict us in what we could communicate. In March, our board approved our budget, which you all have seen, and the purchase of the Pendergrass property. And in April of this year, we provided the resolutions to each of our school district to take back to their boards for approval. And now John's going to come up and talk about the capital projects and our work on the Pendergrass building.
Excuse me, I'm not good. I just wanted to remember it. Again, I'm John Glavine. Thank you for having me. Over the past 10 years, the college has made significant investments in the STEM programs and most of our other classrooms and facilities. We had a built major STEM complex, started in 2008. That was about a $45 million project. We financed a bond. Also, an auditorium, nursing simulation lab, as we did that about 10 to 12 years ago. And we've been renovating our classrooms and both our Marple Downingtown campus. And that was also financed with bonds that we had taken out. Next slide, please. Financing this project, we estimate to do the renovation would be about $55 million bond. That's the maximum. When we go out for resolutions, we try to put the max line out there so it does, for some reason, go over, you know, we don't want to go back. The capital funding, that's imperative for this project. Capital funding, the college receives 50% of the annual debt service. Once it's approved, then they have the available funds. So that is the key for us. Our board will not move forward unless there is PDE funding for 50% of the debt. Right now, Commonwealth Pennsylvania pays for 50% of all of our debt service. And the college has a, does fundraising for any of its major capital campaigns. Next slide. There is an impact, not a financial, but it will be no negative cash flows or no cash flows from any of our sponsoring school districts for this project. But what it does is extend the term of our debt through 2038 through 39. Right now, it stops at 2035. We have to come back to these sponsoring school districts and ask for your approval to extend that debt out. Again, your cash flows will not be impacted with this debt service. And again, the capital camp, the capital and debt service commitment that you have right now will remain the same through 2034, 35. And again, it's not going to change for 2038, 39 because we have no cash flows in our pocket. Next slide.
I'm sorry. How can you guarantee us that on that other slide? How can you, like, none of us are going to be here in 35, probably. How can you guarantee us that?
Well, I think that's where, you know, the dose to the meeting, the minutes to the meeting that will be, will be put into place. And that's, I agree, no, I won't.
Can we have a document that says that, that we all sign? It's not a part of the resolution.
No. It's not explicit.
We can, we can talk through it, but that's a real question because
Yeah, no, I understand.
We have fiduciary responsibility to a whole different set of taxpayers.
That is true.
And
But we, in essence, we're coming to you for, right now, there's a, the amount that is, that is part of the appropriation is about $8.5 million or $8.8 million. That's the total appropriation from the sponsoring school districts. And the formula, correct me if I'm wrong, was a third, a third, a third. So we've never been able to collect a third. Again, we are cognizant of your taxpayer base, and we just know there's not, it's not going to happen. And the other side of it is the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania was supposed to be taking in a third. Now, they'll 50% of the debt service, but they'll do, you know, they're supposed to do a third of the operating. They don't make that either. And again, they have fiscal constraints also. So it makes much of the burden is from the students. It comes, 60% of it comes from the students. So is, you know, I have to freely admit that we will not be here, but, you know, we can state clearly that we are not going to burden you with cash flows. We're, we're not going to say, come back and say, "We need $2 million for this debt service project." We're not.
So by signing the resolution, does that extend our contract?
Yes.
So if we don't sign the contract, it doesn't extend our, our
That's incorrect.
You are committed to support the community college with or without the agreement. The only way you can get out of that is with PDE, petition PDE to withdraw your sponsorship.
So
What do we do with the resolution?
Yeah, then what?
Resolution.
Is required because if you look at the agreement, in the agreement, it says that the agreement continues until all the debt of the college is paid in full.
Right. So
But it doesn't appear to, when I looked, have any language that actually requires, that specifies how debt after the initial formation, after the initial charter, how that debt would be adopted by the college. It doesn't seem to set out any procedure for the participating districts.
Correct.
So the resolution was just kind of a fail-safe to make sure that everybody knew?
Well
Like, there's not in there that seems to require it.
I formed the opinion that that wording required it. And some year, the 2008 bond, I forget who, but somebody demanded that we get a written opinion. So we got an opinion, written opinion from Blank Rome that said the same thing. They said that, excuse me, that agreement requires us to get approval of the sponsors when the debt we're issuing goes beyond the existing debt.
Well, you said you've incurred debt for Downingtown. There was no resolution for that.
That's right, because we do not put that on you. That's Chester County. That, that's a great question. And that, that is a standalone entity, and it just, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
And Ms. Joy, you can be over there, too. I mean, you're no problem still.
It's a standalone entity, and we, and the sponsoring school district will not ask to be approved for it. And it fell under an umbrella of debt that we already had extended out already. So that, actually, that debt's coming off 2022.
Yeah. You can see how it's a hard spot, right, for a district to be in, a partner of yours who, and we love you, don't misunderstand any, and this is just my opinion, right? I can only speak for myself and not speaking for this board. But it's a hard thing to be told, "Sign this resolution," and if you don't sign it, it doesn't make a difference because it's still going to affect you. Right? And that's sort of what I'm hearing. You can sign this or not sign this, it doesn't make a difference. Your debt is being extended. Your relationship with us is being extended for you.
So if eight of the 12 sponsoring districts approve?
Yes, that's, that's correct. It's just like our budget. If you vote no, but everybody else votes yes, then you're required to
You don't need our approval to do this project.
That is correct.
We need your approval. We need your approval to issue bonds.
Right. He's suggesting that in fact, less, fewer than eight of 12 participating entities don't have the, that in fact, the debt won't be extended. That is correct.
Okay.
We have, we, we need your approval for eight approvals to move forward. That's what we're
My question is, how many school board have already approved it?
We have, we have eight.
Yeah.
But, 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 you know, so truly, you are the owners of Delaware County Community College. It's just, it's, I, I think it's respect to come to you and ask and say, "Look, this disagreement, this debt service is going to push it out to 2039." I think that's just transparency to the end degree before the hospital. And it's a great project. It's within a district, and it'll really help our students complete their education without traveling, you know, an hour and a half on a bus in that, and I think it's a great project. But again, I'm, you know, I'm the guy that's going to finance the project. And then I guess the, but can you stress enough that your cash flows will not be impacted by this extended out? So are there any other questions? Even so, I have a passion about this.
Yeah. School has burdened the students
In those preceding years, if they're carrying a lot of this currently, so if these students are, if these students are borderline students that are having a difficult time getting to schools, an hour and a half, projected out to the future, what would, if you could extrapolate, what would be their burden?
Well, that's, that's an excellent question. What happens is that this is, first off, if you take the debt service and you take 50% of the debt service off the table, the debt service is a $4 million project. I mean, that's what it is right now at a cost of about $4 million. Again, that's outside of $55 million, a 20-year project. So you're left with $2 million, and you say, "Oh, that's quite a bit of money." That, what happens is that we've done enough studies to say that we have a population that is not being served in that area, that it'll absolutely pay for itself. You know, we've done the computations, and Joy knows me, I, I'm conservative, and I'll say, "Hey, wait a second. What is the impact on our students?" And then we have a fundraising arm. So if the fundraising arm of the college raises X amount, millions of dollars, five, six, seven, then, then the exposure to the student is even dropping faster. So, and we've done that with our Downingtown project, our STEM project. We've had some significant capital projects, and it has lowered
I may also say the student, our burden on the students is limited by law. We can only get one-third of our operating. So we can't, we can't raise anything beyond that.
Right. Thank you. So we have, we try to look at the numbers. And again, we try to project out, you know, what is the impact? Again, we have operating costs increases like everyone else. But this is, we've looked at it every which way, and it's, it's a, it's a good project. And again, it's, it's just a great location for us. Yes?
Again, can we get a list of the school district that have already approved this?
May I, can I do the reverse? I can give you the school districts that have not approved it.
No.
The ones, the ones that
Can you send us a list?
We can, yes.
I can.
Oh, okay. There you go. That's why she's boss.
That's okay. Don't do any good job.
I don't feel
All right. Those that have approved it already are Garnet Valley, Radner, Ridley, Rose Tree Media, Southeast Delco, Upper Darby, Wallingford Swarthmore, and Haverford.
What's the last?
Haverford.
I recall Haverford.
Did I say it wrong?
Yes, you got it.
But let me just add to what John is saying here. We are a capacity in those two lease spaces. So is there a need there? Yes. We just can't grow anymore. If we had more space, we'd offer more classes in that lease space, but we don't have the space to do that.
Before we move to the next slide, you know, turn the opportunity to look at our current operations and basically handle some construction for us. Are there any other questions? Well, thank you very much for letting me respond to your question.
Thanks, John. Thank you for having us here. I want to smooth through the property itself and what we plan on doing with it. So feel free to stop me while we're talking here. I don't know how many of you are familiar with the property building itself on Landsdowne and Garrett Road here. What the college is looking at is looking at about eight and a half acres total. This is currently the less senior boner high school, active high school. So the property line extends down the center road, across, down, and across the front road. And we do not have the field. We don't have any of that. This is approximately eight and a half acres here total. The white buildings that you see here are the buildings that we're going to be taking down. We need to take those down, one, because while they're very poor condition, and two, because we need parking space. So what we're left with is the main building, the annex, and a gym, which we currently do not have even on our main campus. Next slide. So what you're left with, again, is the main building, the annex, and the gym. Because the Archdiocese restricts in telling us that they do not want any changes made on the front of this building, because it is 1917, that limited us to doing anything in the furniture here. The front entrance is not handicap accessible, obviously. You have steps going into the building and then more steps to get into the building. So what we're planning on doing is actually creating two entry points on the edges of the building. These are kind of transportation hubs we call. We're going to look at the building, but once somebody enters this building here, it's going to be a wide open atrium area. You're going to be able to see straight up, straight down, floating staircases, elevators, and you're going to be able to get into these two locations. Still keeping the main entrance, but this is how we're going to handle the back parking and the front parking. You've got to understand, the trolley location is approximately right here off of Landsdowne and Garrett. So that's going to be a great access point for the folks that are getting off the trolley or the bus. Next slide. This is an idea what it looks like from the location of Landsdowne and Garrett. You're going to be looking at the building. This is a new transportation area that we're going to be adding here, and this, again, one on the back of the building. And again, we're going to pick up whatever we can as far as the stone, the metal, and everything else, and try to blend it all in. Thank you. Again, just an idea what it looks like in the evening lit up. You can see inside the building. You can see the grand stairs going up. You can see the way it floats. The two buildings, the main building and the annex, are not exactly connected level. One is actually up higher than the other, so by creating this, we're creating hairs, flight down and flight up to the annex and for the main building. Next. Again, just a render of what it may look like in the evening. Next. Is that, any questions about the property of the building itself?
Thank you.
So, I'm sorry. So the college is going to, they're purchasing the property, or is that another lease? Could be another lease. You're purchasing part of it. And then you will still keep the other two leased properties?
We have not made that decision, but I would say that this property does offer the opportunity to be able to house the students from both centers in that, in that building.
One question. Yes, John? What courses will be offered there?
Well, again, we want to be able to offer, as I said to you, 60% of our students transfer. So we want to be able to provide them with those transfer courses that they want and they need before they transfer on. So we're going to be offering those, what you would see traditionally as transfer courses. We're also going to be offering those labs that are for any major students going on into, including our nursing program. But we're also going to offer advanced technology courses as well, certificate programs that allow people to get a certificate and go into the workforce and, and get a good-paying job. And then perhaps maybe come back and get a second certificate. And no matter what happens in those certificates, we give credit for prior learning. So if someone decides to come back and get a degree, then the coursework that they have taken as part of those certificate programs will be applied toward their learning.
I guess my last question is, I remember years ago, the Delaware County Community College offered courses to seniors at a discount and other non-traditional courses that would reach out into the community. Would you still be able to do that with this project?
We continue to offer the kinds of programs we offer at the Marple campus, absolutely. We have something at the Marple campus each March called Elder Week, I think it's what it's called. And so that's an opportunity for, for our senior citizens to come on the campus during spring break when no one else is there, as it becomes their campus. And so an opportunity for them to do that kind of learning, not just at that time, but at any time, but certainly during Elder Week. We would look to do something like that here as well. Another thing that we hope to do in this facility is to create a community empowerment center, to engage the community in a number of ways.
I have a question. Since you said community empowerment, would, like, so you have a gym. Would that gym, could that gym be shared by the community?
We would look to do that, yes. Yeah. Yeah, we would look to do that, working with, you know, all of our neighbors there. We would be looking to do whatever we could. It's part of being part of the community.
Thank you. Yes?
You said in finance, you're going to float a bond for $35 million. So is, do you have a figure as to what monies will be going in there to, you know, the construction of the building?
What? I think the entire $55 million is going toward the construction clause.
That is correct. No. You had indicated before that 55 is the maximum. You haven't really anticipated construction budget yet? We, we have some estimated ballpark numbers, but again, we, you know, once you get in there and really take a look at the facility, I mean, really take a hard look at it and see what the, what the issues you're up against. Again, it's just a broad number. And again, we have to be cognizant of, you know, what type of debt service you're going to, you know, be coming out with also. So I think we're at that, you know, again, we're still at the preliminaries, getting the, the school districts to help to approve the project and then, you know. But again, we had to do a broad number.
Another point is we issue revenue bonds, unlike you. We cannot issue a general obligation bond. So the only thing pledged on our bonds is the college's revenue.
So let me follow. You said you haven't been in the, not been, but you haven't really been going into the building to see what's going to be needed.
We didn't have extensive research, but it, it could come in with labor costs. It could come in at $50 million. I mean, once we really start narrowing it down and when we're going to go sell the bond, the key, as we, early on, is that we need the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's approval, and that may be a couple of years. And between now and a couple of years, we, we won't know what happens to labor costs, materials costs. And you know, that fluctuates up and down based on economic factors. And we will, we'll have to, you know, again, it could, it won't exceed 55, but it certainly could come down. But we want to get, put at least a number out there. So we could do some budgeting also, yes?
Have you done, is Upper Darby mandating traffic surveys and such?
Yes.
I mean, and how many cars do you think you're going to add per day in that intersection?
We currently don't know. We're, we're looking at a possibility of creating 500, almost 600 parking lots. So we're doing the impact study right now, it's one of the things that the township's requiring.
Right, because there's only one entrance, right? And that's coming from one direction.
Well, actually, we're going to create another, and then we're looking at making Ulysses Avenue two lanes rather than one, for a third entrance.
Okay, okay.
This is more breaking more.
But as we move into the future, becomes more technology, more internet, more cyber, what's your fallback plan if you should have a decrease in your student population, which helps fund your projections over the next few years?
Well, number one, we have to be cognizant of that right now, because we are seeing a growth in our online education, students taking advantage of that. But we also see a large number of our students do not have the capacity at home in terms of computer and data plans and internet to be able to take advantage of that. So while a large percentage of students can, not all students can take advantage of that. And so, this, this campus would allow us to have those kinds of labs open so that people could come in and use that. Even the community could be able to come in and use those computers. And so, it's not, it's not going to be all or, or one, one way or the other. Right now, we see students putting together their schedules, two courses online, one 16-week course, one eight-week course, and the second eight weeks, whatever works with them, because they have all kinds of responsibilities.
That's just one, that's a point I actually was going to make. I was going to say, first of all, this idea of satellite campus is awesome for here. I know several children that will love this, even adults in general, due to the fact that going out to the Marple campus is such an issue, because there's no direct line. You've got to get on two to three buses to get to the Marple campus. So I personally, for me, it's awesome. The idea's awesome. What I, the one concern I have is, is community accessibility. Because one thing is, is that you're building something this great, I hope that it isn't a plan, and I like the fact that you said community empowerment, which is great. I hope it's in a plan to get the community more involved and more access, because as you know, our libraries are being shortened with hours at times. So this is just an awesome idea, and I'm glad that the campus is coming, but, you know, it's just, community accessibility is, it hurts especially in our area, where we're at and where we're situated, with kids trying to get access to internet access and things of that nature, having the ability to use laptops at any given time, you know, certain things like that. I hope that you guys have planned that out to see, because I personally think your numbers aren't going to drop. I think your numbers are going to increase and, because of the, the location. So thank you for putting this together.
I also want to say thank you, but in the sense of time, we have another presentation that we have. So if we have any other questions, we can give them and send them out to you. But I truly appreciate you coming in here this evening and...